All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It feels good to all be in sync.
Yeah, that sounds a lot better than on Zoom.
It does. Um, I do have one change to the agenda I want to recommend, but other than that, does anyone have any other, or are there any other changes to the agenda?
Nothing from staff, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I am, the, let's see, under general business, we had, here we go, the item D, professional services agreement, Morris Letterman. I had originally asked that to be moved to the, to general business. The more I'm thinking about it, I'm fine with it being on consent as it was originally intended. Before I move to consent, did anybody have, is anybody looking for a presentation or looking to discuss that? Okay, so I'd like to move item B into general business to consent agenda.
Okay, should that become six F?
What we're talking about, I just had a comment or a question, is the same survey being used this go around? Because in one of the questions, maybe I shouldn't say this out loud, but it might be the first year that I've read every single one of the questions that was being asked. And it's said in there something about Dakota County taxes instead of...
That was the typo.
Okay. All right, cool.
Um, no, so we were anticipating some discussion, so we should leave it on business if the council is directing or would like any additional question suites. As the memo indicated, some cities are doing questions about COVID or specific or more timely topics. We didn't have any that we were recommending as staff, but if there's particular areas or topic areas that the council would like to explore through the survey, this is an opportunity to do it. But it's about a buck, 150 bucks per question that we add to the survey.
Does anybody want to keep this on general business?
It might not hurt to just chat about it for a second. Doesn't have to be all presentation.
All right, we'll keep it. Thanks, Josh. All right, I was going to back y'all on that.
I'll motion to approve the agenda as is.
Motion by Bryce, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda passes. We have a presentation. Joe, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Joe Faust, I'm the Business Development Specialist with the Scott County Community Development Agency, and I appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening to talk about our fifth annual Fast Track Challenge. And for those of you not familiar with the event, it is kind of a Shark Tank-like business competition. We hold it in October each year. Applications are open at this time and available online at www.scottcountyfasttrack.com. And the application process closes on August 31st. It's a very simple, one-page application. And we do encourage businesses to apply as soon as possible because we'll work with them on their business plans, marketing plans, financial projections, et cetera. In September, we narrow it down and select five companies that then go to a live pitch in front of a panel of judges, and they compete for prizes, including legal services that are donated by Larkin Hoffman Law Firm, design and web services by Neon Lizard, and then we have a number of Chamber of Commerces in Scott County that are donating a one-year free membership. It helps in that it gives the new businesses an opportunity to network, and it also builds their base for potential new businesses in the future. So at this time, we have Prior Lake, Shockpee, and New Prague that are all donating one year. In addition, they're competing for startup funds from the Scott County CDA, and we're waiting on a couple more sponsorships. We are looking for both applicants and sponsors at this time, so if you know of any businesses or organizations that would like to pay it back to other businesses in the community and be a part, it's a very fun way to be involved and get to know some of the new entrepreneurs and ideas that are out there. We also are asking for your assistance in marketing this event, if you know of any businesses that have formed in the past five years, if you want to encourage them to apply for this. In the past, we've done the first three years, but we know that, especially with COVID this past year, it really takes about five years for businesses to get off the ground and running. And our intent is to help them really jumpstart that and shorten that timeframe for success. We are also asking communities this year, if the mayor is willing, to dedicate one hour to each applicant from your community, talk about what resources are available in your city, and we can assist with what's available in the county properties, et cetera. And then next year, we're looking at expanding a little further and having maybe you select the best of your best applicants and have them automatically advance to the finals. So this year, just starting to get them introduced, and then next year, making a little more competition between the communities. I'm pleased to announce that usually we don't start seeing applications until June, and we already have a few in, and two of those are from Elko New Market, so nice to see the entrepreneurship local.
Absolutely. So I have to meet with applicants for an hour?
Would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely not. No, I would love to, that's, I think that's an awesome idea.
All right, great. And I could talk about this event all night. It's been a wonderful opportunity to meet businesses and learn about their ideas and get them in front of individuals with a lot of expertise and mentorship. But I think it's probably more effective if I just turn it over to a quick video that we put together, it's about two and a half minutes long, and it provides you with some of the testimonials from some of our past participants.
Fast Track is like a mini pitch competition. I mean, literally, you're able to go in and provide video, tell your story.
Fill out the application, tell your story, practice, get feedback, and then the actual competition.
That was absolutely invaluable, not, not just for the competition itself, but just as a way to hone what our pitch is.
Applying for the Fast Track, it's a bit of a no-brainer. I mean, you have nothing to lose and a lot to gain. The resources that they provide are key.
The resources?
The resources, like the office that we now sit in today because of that challenge.
Financial, legal, marketing, everything you need in a startup business.
I would encourage any young company to consider applying, entering the competition.
Because it gives you a great opportunity to develop your business plan, to meet with a group of people that really care and are really concerned with your success. I've had several businesses in the past, and I wish I would have had these opportunities back then. It could have made that journey much easier, having this kind of feedback and knowledge and expertise.
Even if we hadn't won, I would still never regret having been a part of the process because good people came, sat around the table, listened to us, practiced our pitch, gave us feedback, and helped us zero in on what our brand promise should be.
Like, I keep going back to the people, because the people and ideas and the feedback you get is invaluable.
There's valuable advising happening here in Scott County, and you can connect to it through the Fast Track Challenge.
Anything to get exposure, experience, and the mentorship, I mean, you just can never have too many people helping you.
All right, and this year, we're also doing a student competition, so we are inviting each of the high schools if they have an entrepreneurship class and they want to have students that pitch offers, looking at possibly having the winner of that competition join in for the live event on the 21st. So we do have one student entry at this time, so if you know any youth that want to try that, encourage, encourage them to do that as well. Any questions?
I think it's, how many years have been, has this been going on now?
This will be our fifth.
This will be the fifth year. That's really cool. I'm glad you guys are doing it, and I'm glad that there's some applicants from Elko New Market already. It's awesome.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public comment.
This is your time to shine. Do you have anything tonight?
You don't want to.
Is anyone interested in speaking on the public comment? Once? Twice? All right, we'll close public comment. Anything on consent agenda? Anyone wants to discuss or have to pull? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion by Bryce.
Second.
Second by Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes for all. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll jump into general business. Item A, authorize sale of bonds.
Tonight, we have Terry Eaton from Baker Tilly to present the authorization sale of bonds action item in the city council. How many of you have met Terry before? We have council people in COVID's different conditions.
Bye-bye. Then I'm going to feel terrible. Well, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I've been working with the city of Elko New Market for, what, Tom, 15 years now, something like that?
It's got to be close to that.
Yeah. So it's been my pleasure and privilege to be here and seeing a lot of growth over the years, and, and Tom is always really good to work with in the staff. They like us to be thorough, so if you have any questions, can you guys hear me, or do I, would you prefer I take the mask off?
I can hear you fine, I can go in there.
I can go either way. And so anyway, tonight, I think you've had a lot of conversations, and I sat in on the meeting last couple weeks ago, and know that this is a topic that you've talked a lot about. And so tonight is a culmination of a lot of that work in, going out and selling bonds to finance the projects that you've been working on. And so Baker Tilly will receive the bids and carry out that bonding transaction with your authorization this evening. So I'm just going to, oh, here we go, trying to see where the button is to advance the slides. I brought my computer, but I'm using Tom's. I'll just set this one down. So the request is to authorize bond issuance of $4,160,000. And there are two different components of that bond, so again, to save issuance costs, we combine them into one bond issue. And the first piece of that is the land purchase for the land adjacent to the city offices. The bond amount for that is, or the project cost is $450,000. And then the water and sewer utility is another type of bond, a general obligation revenue bond, and the components of that are for the I-35W utility extension, $3,496,594. And that is shared between the two utilities, 58% from water, 42% from sewer, and then the main forest network sewerage, $110,000 project, all funded by Sewer. So in your packet, there is a sales document, a recommendation, that's several pages to it. So instead of, you know, walking through that, we just put the highlights in here, but certainly if you have any questions on the bigger document, we can go through it. One of the key components of that is the, the timing that's coming up. If you authorize this evening on April 8th, we would be selling the other shaded area, which is May 13th. Bids would be received in our office that morning, and then we would bring the bid tabulation to you that evening and a word to the lowest bid, which is, you know, we calculate for you the bid tab and tell you the lowest interest rate. And you'd have proceeds by June 10th. And in between that, working with staff, the bonds would be rated. As you know, you have a very high credit rating, double A+, and, and so that would be another part of the process with your staff and putting out a preliminary offering statement and all the work that goes on behind the scenes. The term of the bond, just some key pieces from that document, we're estimating the interest rate of 2.45%. And again, on the day of sale, the actual interest rate is what you will pay, but this is based on what the market looks like today, maybe a few, a very small contingency, just in case rates move up or down. Based on 2.45, the average debt service would be about $257,000 a year. The term is for 20 years repaying that, and after 10 years, you could pay off the bonds, call them, or refinance them without penalty, so that's an option too for flexibility. If things are better than you expect, you have opportunities to call, you can call the rest of the bonds, or even certain maturities, some of the longest, the 20 or 19th year payment, you can call some of those, anytime after 10 years. So when you issue this kind of bond, the pledge comes from a number of services. So typically, if you sell a general obligation utility bond, we call it a double barrel pledge. So you are pledging the revenues from the water and sewer, and you're also, because they're general obligations, saying if the revenues aren't enough, we're also pledging our tax base as a levy, just like you would fund your city operations. So it has a double pledge. And in the case of the capital improvement plan bond, they don't have another revenue, it's simply a levy pledge. So those are what those mean to the investors. But in addition to that, these bonds are unique in that you have additional pledges because there's a certain amount of contingency with this that the city staff negotiated to get help to make sure that it was limited exposure. And the first of those is the two developers have agreed to a special assessment payment of $50,000 each annually, which should generate $100,000 a year for the next 15 years. And that's even if development doesn't keep up at that pace. And of course, if we end up getting, if you collect that, and then actual development happens later that they would have to pay on, otherwise if you have already basically prepaid, they get a credit for that. Then in addition to that, if between the assessment payment and additional trunk and connection fees collected, that is insufficient to make the timely debt service payments, then you have an agreement with Scott County CDA that they will cover the shortfall up to $250,000 a year, up to a max of $3 million. That all has to be repaid by the city by 2051. So you have a lot of time to watch that area develop, which really minimizes the risk to the city in that the portion of the bonds impacted in this issue of the total, this pledge will cover about $3,580,000 of the bonds. And again, you've got a pledge of 250 from Scott County and $100,000 from the developers, and your annual debt service is 221. It's not every year a matchup, but it gives you an idea, order of magnitude of the kind of coverage that you have from other guarantees and sources. So I think that's important, and it makes, the investors who buy the bonds are mostly going to care about the GO pledge and the utility pledge, but the fact that you have this is a pledge to the city, and that's important for the community to know. I mentioned that these bonds are being marketed with a double A-plus rating from S&amp;P, and for the general audience watching, the, the rating system, the higher the rating, generally the lowest, the lower your interest rate costs. And the reason for that is, it's a solid rating, the investors assume they're going to get repaid, they won't require as high of an interest rate. And so the fact that triple A is the highest, and then there are double A groups, in this case, it's a plus, then nothing, and then a minus for S&amp;P. Then there's a single A group, and then there's a triple B group, and all of these are investment-grade options, so you're just one notch from the very highs it can be. So that helps in setting the interest rate and gives you an advantage.
Terry, would you anticipate, based on what's happening with the rating agencies, that our rating is likely to change when we go for a rating call?
Subject to not actually studying for sure the financial statements, I would say right now, right after the pandemic, the rating agencies put out different papers saying that all these cities were at risk, and they had a negative outlook. In the last two weeks, they've removed the negative outlook, and in all the credit rating reports, I've already had cities have received CARES money to help shore up costs. The tax bases in many communities are largely untouched, and now you're on, about to receive the American Rescue Plan dollars that are coming out. And so now, they think that the cities are the healthiest that they've seen. And so at this point, I don't anticipate you would have a downgrade at all. So. And the other piece of data that's in your favor is that we are in a 50-year-low still interest rate market. And so this is the, the black bar. That is a combination of an index for all general obligation bonds. This is all credit ratings, all terms lumped together, but it's the same grouping that they've been tracking for many, many years from the Bond Buyer Index. And you can see just in the last five years that we are now at a very low point. You know, when I move the arrow, it's showing up on your computer, but not on the big screen there, but. So we're in a very low, and if you saw the last 20 years, you'd see these five years are in a low place for the last 20 years as well. And I know you all, you know, are aware of the fact that you're in a great time to, to issue debt, and of course, you know, real estate agents are telling that to everyone too, it's a great time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions specifically or not specifically about bonds.
Terry, anyone have any questions? Josh, you look like you wanted to ask something.
I'm trying to think of something.
Amanda Bryce, you guys good?
Yeah.
Good. You did a great job. If you have any questions.
Well, thank you.
So the action item on this would simply be the adopt resolution 2122, authorizing the issuance and sale of the general obligation bond, series 2021.
So quickly on that, I know Linda sent out an email adding that to the agenda, but the ones that were printed out doesn't say, doesn't have that.
No, this would be the action item at the top of the memo.
Oh.
We didn't have the action item at the time that we sent the agenda.
Just want to make sure we're not doing something that's not on the official agenda set up. I'll motion to adopt resolution 2122.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I think you go. This is my third meeting, I'm going to be in a home. I haven't gone to our office yet, so it's exciting. It's been a month, I'm looking forward to it.
Glad you could make it.
That's how I feel when I get out, like, look at me go.
All right, item D, professional services agreement.
What do you want to talk about, Josh?
Yeah, Josh, it's on your mind.
Tom, do you want to present anything, or?
Do you include all the information?
That's, that's a great answer.
I think the big thing is, do you want to change the mix? I think all the base questions are there, the question is, is there any additional areas that the council wants to use the survey to explore, knowing that it's $150 approximately per question that we'd add? If it's a multi-paced question, obviously, it's a more expensive question. Staff, quite honestly, there wasn't anything that we felt justified the additional cost, but that doesn't mean that there isn't something that from a policy standpoint, the council wants to poke at.
So I don't think I'm crazy, but these last few weeks have made me feel like I'm crazy, and like, this community doesn't want to grow at all, and they don't want any, any growth. So I mean, and we don't have anything in the survey, and which is why I read through every single question, besides maybe at the top where it says, you know, what's your biggest fear, what's the biggest thing you're worried about, there's the one about too much growth, but there's nothing specific in any of that, and I just didn't know if it would be a good time to add something like that, to try to capture the pulse of this community in a more, they won't say that, in a, in a different way than just on Facebook and social media and when specific issues come up. So that's just where my head immediately went to.
So Josh and Tom and I meet every other week, and this came up in one of our meetings a couple weeks ago, or a few weeks back, and I was ready just to be hell bent on scrapping the survey altogether, not doing it. And I still question the value that we get out of it. And I know, Tom, you put together a very nice memo, kind of outlining your position, and I, I'm not going to try and, I'm not going to try and argue against that necessarily. I think we, I think maybe our actions need to be more focused on, and we'll get into this later down the road at future meetings, but the accountability and how do we actually use this as a measure of accountability and how we have a job we're actually doing. That said, I, I question what kind of, I question the value of the information that we would get when it comes to kind of what you're, where you're heading with this. And the elephant in your room is, there's unhappy people with the NWF project that came up at the last meeting. And some of it may be misguided. I don't know, I don't know that we're going to get any more information on the community survey than what we've got in every other year, is that people want a quick trip, people, or people want a grocery store, people want another gas station. I, I don't know, it seems to be the same information recycled, and people, to your point, Josh, I think there's a, there is, there's an element of growth people want, but people at the same time kind of came here to get, or a lot of people came here to get out of maybe bigger cities. So I just don't know that we're going to get good useful information by tweaking a survey question, would be my response, it's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a single survey question either, so if you're, so there's multiple dimensions to it, and if you want to add to that, the question is, isn't, well, do you want the city to grow?
Okay, so somebody might say, well, I don't want the city to grow, but I want a grocery store, and I want lower taxes, and you know, so to get a full handle on the total issue and where the person really is, as opposed to a knee-jerk reaction, usually you have to have some other questions that test some other elements of it. So it's typically, it's, that's why I referred to it as question suites rather than just one, because you need to test other aspects to what the real motivation or what the real position of the individual is. They, and sometimes it's contradictory, you know, I would like the community to remain physically small, but at the same time, I want a grocery store, and I want fast food, and I want, you know, all the things that go for your city. And so I think we could pursue it, but I think what we'd have to do is, the council would need to identify a topic area that you want to look at, and then we would have to develop a question suite that would get to trying, you know, to ferret that out, as opposed to just saying, I think we should ask this question.
Well, and I don't disagree with that at all, and I think that's where looking at some of those, and this is on me for not maybe going into depth years past either, I mean, do we care about our snowplow anymore? Corey and the team rock at it, so is it a suite of questions that we should be asking? Could we replace it with more of the topics that we're getting pushback on or interest in, or whatever? And I think that's where maybe we wouldn't get a lot, I don't know how much information, it's only a sample of 250 people too, so I question, I mean, I've never been called, and, I mean, I'd love to give my feedback on a survey like this, but, you know, and I know that there's study validity stuff, so it makes it valid and, you know, all of that, but, I don't know, it just seemed like a lot of the questions. To your point, I mean, I think we already know where we sit, and, and I don't know if there is a lot of value coming out of it versus just tackling some of those elephant-in-the-room type of questions that are just more dirty and you actually can maybe provide some feedback more proactively, but, I don't know. And I don't know if you, can you swap out five for new five and not have a cost added or anything like that?
Yeah, it's based on the number of questions and the price. On some of those basic service level questions, I'd argue that yes, are valuable, just in the last survey.
Are they indicative of trends or patterns or?
It's the trends and patterns, so for example, in the last survey, our overall positive ratings didn't change a lot, but one of the things that we noted here, recall this from the presentation, is that our number of excellence from the previous survey dropped down to good, and based on, again, the analysis, based on what they've seen in other communities and the feedback they were getting. The result, and we'd actually enhanced surveys, so what we was is the changing expectations. We were becoming more suburban in the expectation related to service levels. When we made big jumps in our service levels and the expectation was of a, was more towards the township level of the spectrum, God, everybody was super impressed. But even though we were continuing to provide incrementally higher levels of service, as we continue to evolve as a community, the expectations now were becoming more suburban. So you, so there are trends that are valuable with regards to level of service. So if you want to stay good, you just can't, you may want to make, be proactive in how you're providing services. For example, that's just one way in which, one small way in which we can use the results of it. It can identify emerging trends. One of them that's starting to emerge is desire for community center. That's been an emerging trend over time. One of them that was identified was the whole idea of code enforcement. In fact, the consultant underestimated it, but he says, you guys need to keep an eye on this. This is starting to emerge based on other evolving communities. Your expectation in this area is starting to become more suburban, and you need to keep an eye on it over the next three to five years. He was talking about what the trend is. 18 months later, we're seeing an unprecedented number of calls related to code enforcement that in a 12-month timeframe went from here to here in the expectations of the community related to code enforcement. So there's ways to get an, it's not always, it's, there's some arc to it. It's not entirely science, but it does identify trends that help you provide services. One potential way, Brady's not here, so I can say this, but if you're making hard decisions in the budget and you feel you're meeting, because we're staffing for coverage. But if you feel that the general community feels that the level of coverage is okay, even though they don't know the details of it, that might inform you to making budget decisions. It might relate to snowplowing. It might let you know of, we're making, you know, what the expectations. You know, we've been doing the same Parks and Rec deal for years. Now all of a sudden, we've gotten 98% approval ratings. Now all of a sudden, we're slipping down to 85. Why is that happening? So it can provide that trending information is becoming more valuable as we get down the road.
All right, so Tom, we're going to disagree on this, I know that. But I would then, every single thing you said, I would say, we don't need to spend $8,000 to find that out. I think there are, I I've been on this council since 2015. And other than small anecdotal comparisons from, and speaking just council members, I don't think we've used that survey really for much of anything. Now, I don't question that staff has. I do wonder that if we're getting any value for spending $8,000 to find out that people are pretty happy with snowplow. To Josh's point earlier, I would be of the opinion that I think we need to scrap the surveys and kind of reevaluate how we check the pulse of the community. I mean, as a city of just under 5,000 with five city council people, we should have a fairly decent pulse on the community without having to spend $8,000. And it would be our jobs as elected representatives to then pass that on to staff.
I would, I would argue that, at least code enforcement. I remember a discussion just a couple of years ago on the council where there was very strong opinions because they had knocked on the every door in the community. That code enforcement is not an important, an important issue, and they have the pulse in the community. So I would argue that individually, it's council people, collectively, you have a sense of it, but you're still limited to your particular networks and the people you talk to. There isn't, it's, it's not fully objective.
But then I'm going to disagree with that because, well, I guess I'm going to counter that point by saying, we can measure our, the community's desire in code enforcement by the number of calls. We don't need to spend money on a survey. And I don't know that we're losing anything necessarily by being reactive to the calls that come in, by being proactive with the survey. Plus, when people are responding to the survey, they're not looking at it with the necessary foresight of maybe we as, or we as a city are necessarily looking at it. So I don't know that we're getting apples cut off the seat, Josh. Now I'm ready to.
No, I love it.
This is a good discussion.
I'm with you on this. I, I can scrap.
But at the same time, when we're getting those calls, we're only getting hearing from the people that care enough to call.
That are pissed off. And it's the squeaky wheel. It's the same thing with the MWF stuff. I mean, so we're only going to hear a small percentage of it, which is, well, again, that's making me feel crazy, but I don't think I'm crazy.
I don't think you're crazy.
But and that's where, I do see there is value to something like this if, as long as we can ask the right questions, to get to the, to the right topics or whatever. I do think it would be, given that's the first place I went to and I asked Tom for it after the last meeting, I just kind of want to see what is the more objective pulse of the community? That's not just upset people or, I don't know how you phrase it, potentially not knowing all the details of it or being biased or whatever. But because I think that's a lot that we respond to from pressure being in these seats. And I would love to fall back on, well, no, sorry, not that I don't care about the 15 people that are complaining about it, but we have a majority of people that do want more growth, more housing options, more whatever. And I think that's where you move it on, something like this.
The other thing I have to point out, and it's not, we do under, do it as a, as a measurement, trying to figure out if you're following meeting the expectations of your community and trying to stay with it and ahead of it. So that, because if you've always had expectations, you're ready to go down, I mean, we move from the good to the bad end. But sometimes when you do these, you find out good things about your community and you can, you can use them to promote your community. I would say the mileage that you've gotten out of some of the spectacular approval ratings related to the quality of life and a lot of the services you provide, there's value in that as well. Now, you're not guaranteed to get that, but those are things that are also value that you're getting out of the survey.
I hope to hear from the rest of the council. And Tom, you did a good job here in the memo, and I understand your passion on it, but I want to hear from the council.
I'm leaning towards scrapping it myself. I mean, I think I can send a survey monkey and do a good response rather than.
I think we tried to have a sample of 250 people.
And Amanda, if you are undecided, then I would say we move this to the next meeting, and we'll have a full council discussion.
So I guess for me, I'm wondering, well, I'm trying to remember what kind of a response we got from our farmers market survey. I can't remember how many responses. Kevin, do you know?
Yeah, Corin, if you want to.
Okay. How do you remember that? Yeah, you're at its day. You know, is there a way, like, we, we don't have necessarily a skill set in-house to look at trends and things. So I can see the value in spending the money on a survey, but I would agree that we maybe should take a look at what the questions are going to be. And, you know, crafting questions that are more specific to what we're, you know. We only hear from the normal, mad people or the really happy people. You don't hear from the people that just kind of rush it off. And so I guess I'm.
You're saying it gives us an opportunity to hear from those who live on our neighborhood?
Yeah, and I think that, like, I see value in the survey to some degree, but I agree that it will cost a bit. But I think that we just have to take a, maybe we take a closer look at the questions or if there are specific things that we want to kick, to remove. So snowplowing, we don't want to hear about that, but we do want to hear more specific to what kind of growth or, well, what kind of growth you are looking for. Because one of the options could be none, you know, but then kind of break that down into more specific questions. I just don't know what those questions will be.
So let's do this. All right. I'm saying.
But then we would have spent $8,000 for something that two of us right now have seen no value in.
Are, are we expecting to have a full council in the next meeting?
As far as I know.
Listen to, just take, listen to the other people. Kate's been on the city council for a while, I feel, if we get a meeting on it. And maybe we do end up compromising and scrapping some questions at each more, I don't know. But I'd like to have a full council discussion on it and then maybe gives each of us a time to follow Josh's lead and read every single question. Counsel, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, do you need a motion for that, Tom?
No.
Okay.
That's directed.
All right, I saw Commissioner Wolf walk in. We didn't publicly comment already, but we like you, so we like you.
If I can, I'll give you 60 seconds. Thank you. Nice to see everybody again. I see everyone's lost weight except me.
You might need to do your eyes something.
Nice. Hey, so just a couple of things tonight, Mr. Mayor, council members, everybody. Tom Wolf, county commissioner, again. Looking at that half cent sales tax, that's going to come rolling around. It's been seven years. I gotta admit, I was against it at first back in 14. You know, we're starting to talk about this, another tax, but it's, I think we're up to about 10 million a year. This has provided about 50, 60 million dollars, which we've turned into about $200 million with matching between met council and the state and the federal. You have to come with dollars or they don't look at a lot of projects, so. But we'll have to go through public hearings on what kind of projects we're going to, we have to have listed projects that you have identified. And we'll do some, a little maintenance you can do, there's going to be some for transit, but the majority is going to be for things like, we did 169 and 41 over by Chaskin Renaissance there. We're going to do 282, 169, hoping to get this 35 and 2 done. I, Bryce, you were on the call this morning, and I don't know if you heard about that, but.
He gave us an update that looked.
Oh, good Lord. There was a big thud, I'm telling you, when I dropped that, I was like, uh-oh, who's this guy? And if we don't say anything, will it just go away? And but I am a gardener, and I think you plant seeds in this world. And if you don't say something, nothing will ever happen. So I think I'm going to, you know, just keep bringing it up and, because I brought it up to people and they've, you know, it just, it's not going to go away. You know, the bubble gum and duct tape and wire they put on there to fix it up here a year or two ago? Is that the long-term fix on that bridge? And, you know, I think they're looking at five, six years. But we'd be willing to, you know, at the county, possibly putting the money into the project as long as the state will pay us back later on when it was the time for it to be whatever. So, I mean, there's a lot of different answers here, but.
Who's saying the county will pay it for? That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Now you're getting like 60 minutes where you're cutting off people, right? I said, and there was, there's more to that, right? But so anyhow, it's, you know, it's, it's in the works and I thought the answers they gave us later after that were like, I don't know, go pump sand. You know, I mean, just go away, guys, you know, so, but we just have to keep on saying something. So somebody said, yeah, don't bring it up. I said, you know what, I'm going to say something. They're talking about everything else. You know, I mean, that's, it's reality. So we're part of the deal, so anyhow, shots, you know, everyone can get a shot now if they want to sign up. I actually just got mine at Canterbury, the Johnson and Johnson, so one, I'm all done.
Pharmacy and townhouse.
What's that?
Our pharmacy and townhouse.
Oh, is that, okay, great. So two people like fainted around me. Both of them, I called like 911 on one of them. It's just like, is this happening all day? See that on camera, but. One girl goes and she sits down and all of a sudden her head falls back and she's starting to fall. My wife's like, you better go, I go catch her. And all of a sudden, I'm holding her and she, like, 20 seconds later, she comes to and she goes, why are you holding me? Well, because you were going to fall on your face and she, I wasn't. And other people come, what's everyone looking at me for? I'm like, lady, you were out. I mean, and they said, that's, that's a reaction that kids from 20 to, or people 20 to 35 or something, 40 have is they might pass out. And one guy just, he was standing, walking in the bathroom and just boom, fell on his head and he was O U T, out, so. Yeah, anyhow, you're probably seeing some signs pop up around Credit River area, maybe some this way. There's going to be election for Credit River City Council. And so they're going to get a mayor, two four-year terms and two, two-year term, 13 people, three for mayor, five for each other spots. A lot of campaigning going on. The only thing that's going to help it probably get a little more legs is that there's a referendum going on for Lakeville. And so that'll probably bring a few more people out, but sometimes the under vote on some of these things either way is, you know, a big, I don't know. I think 300 could win it for being mayor, but I also think, you know, maybe it might take 1,500. I don't know, you know, it's just, it's, it's crazy because it's going to be May 11th, it's a nice day. I think it's the birthday of our state, by the way, but anyhow. But, you know, so it's going to be, I think some people actually just got into it because, you know, they want the novelty of being the first city council. And I, you know, they don't have to go to a council meeting before, I don't care about that, but some never have. And, you know, so I don't, we'll, we'll see what happens, so no big deal. Other than that, I think, I think that's all I have tonight. So again, nice to see everybody again. I was just very glad I saw, there's no zoom, what the hell is going on? So anyhow, I went to spring and thank you. But keep calling and talking to your congresspeople and whatever about that deal out there, they squeaky wheels.
Okay, back to ports. Go back into administration.
So what I have tonight is just on streetlight banners and decorations for the decorative lanes put in. You know, the assumption that long time we were going to do something, but there's been no specific discussions on it. The mayor had raised the question about, say, what's the plan? It's last fall. I had Kevin do some research on it as far as what it would look like from a cost standpoint, what you get for what you pay, just for an initial discussion by the council and some directions since we're starting to come into budget season. To find out if you guys are looking to do anything for the upcoming budget cycle related to this or long term. How many of you have actually seen Kevin in person since he started with us?
Thank you. Yeah, mayor, council members, I am the new recreation specialist, Kevin Dunigan. Nice to meet you guys all in person, live. We just had our first, actually just came across the street from our first live family fun night event. So that was pretty fun, see some families actually there and do all that, so, yeah. So we, a little background on this, like Tom had mentioned, the 2005 master plan. We had some pieces included in that to consider and think about the unique character for the downtown district area and installing the lights. And also thinking about when we install those lights, thinking about, you know, what kind of purposes, what kinds of things you might want to include with those light fixtures. And 2019, there was some discussion to consider streetlight banners and decorations when that project was going on. Those new streetlights were installed with underground utilities to take into consideration potential electric, you know, connections, anything like that that we might want to install with those streetlights. And like Tom had mentioned, in September, he came to me and he asked me to investigate and look into what the cost might look like if we want to install banner arms, hang some banners, and potentially get some holiday decorations for the winter season and so on. So one of the first things I looked into was the warranty and the liability issue. So if we hang anything on those banner poles that cause any damage, could that come back against those warranties? And so just to try and get an idea on what the cost would look like, I reached out to the vendor that actually supplied those poles to us and found out that they actually make a banner arm connection piece. So I figured that at least is a good place to start in terms of making sure we find something that isn't going to cause any damage to the poles, it's going to, you know, form nicely to the poles there. So the company that did that or supplied those poles are Fresco Incorporated here is a local vendor. And so they sent us sizing and pricing for a variety of different banner arm options. We looked at a couple of different examples that they sent us. So the city of Alcoa New Market has that double banner arm. And to, we looked at maybe doing on one side, offering the double banner arms, we can hang the banners. And on the other side, the eyelet option or the eye bolt option, so we could hang holiday light decorations on the other side and some other things. So there you see an example of a couple of things that they do. And those are actually the product that we would actually be looking at using. As you guys can see there, the attachment and what those would look like. So I reached out to a couple of different companies. So I reached out to a couple of different companies, there's a company here, Precision Signs and Imaging, that's located in the south metro, and they provided banners for the city of Burnsville, and had a similar approach to what we were thinking about doing. They, the city of Burnsville, during the holiday season, they actually do what we're talking about, or considering, which is a banner on one side, the lighted decorations on the other side. So again, you know, just trying to gauge pricing and what that might look like, if we wanted to do the whole package, putting together the cost there, so if we choose to move forward with this project, we can obviously investigate other vendors and try and get competitive pricing, but again, the main goal here was just to get an idea on what the total cost would look like. They did suggest, we have a total of forty-seven of those decorative lighting, or those decorative light posts, but they suggested getting sixty of those, so that we have some extra banners on, on hand. There's an example of what Burnsville does, so you can see the double arm on the one side, you can see a lighted direction on the other, or the, the lighted decoration on the other side there. You can also see that the approach they use actually does kinda scratch up the pole a little bit there, so that's why, in talking to the Fresco company, they suggested the eyelet option on the bottom right side of that, so that we can actually hang it directly to that, and it doesn't attach directly to the pole like you see there. In talking, or in that discussion with the contact at Burnsville, the city of Burnsville, he suggested reaching out to Rinders, which is a popular company, there's, there's a handful of others that we could obviously reach out to as well, if we wanted to get, again, competitive pricing, so. But I, I moved forward just to get us, again, an idea on cost and what that would look like. And so based on the different sizing and options that they provided, and what would work for our, the, the sizing that we're looking at, they were able to send me some costs and what that would look like. So per cost pole, if we break that down, on the top would be the double banner arm that would go in both directions. The bottom would have an arm on one side, and a eye, an eye bolt on the other side. And a twenty-four inch, which is what they suggested we do for the size of our poles, per pole would be two hundred and sixty-five dollars for the double arm on the top, two hundred and twenty dollars for the arm and eye bolt option on the bottom. The banner came in at ninety-three dollars per, per banner, and the LED rope light, which was the shape of a snowflake there, and that would fit in that space, there's different sizes and so on, but that was a hundred and two dollars per, per snowflake. So the total cost per pole would come out to about six hundred and eighty dollars. I, in, in a in-depth conversation with the contact, the city of Burnsville, he explained that they actually have somebody that comes out and installs this stuff for them in the holiday, or during the holidays, so that would be a cost that we would have to look into a little further and see. I did have a conversation with, with Tom, and, you know, and whether or not we can maybe do that ourselves, and rent a bucket lift or something like that, but.
Corey felt that we can do the seasonal change out internally, without, cause we presented that option, given the hands on their time and all that, and Corey felt at least initially that that's something we can do internally, so.
Sure. So, but I just wanted to include that caveat there in case, you know, we might have to consider that. So, I laid out some different options based on the, the poles that we have set up there. So the red dots represent, and I'm sure maybe you guys have seen this image before, the red dots are the, the poles around the roundabout, which are a different, a different type of lighted pole. The yellow dots are the decorative, and the orange are also the decorative in the downtown area. So, I just, I just put together some, some quick thoughts there, quick approaches, and if you guys have something that you might wanna throw in, obviously that's open for discussion, but. So if we did all forty-seven decorative light posts, which are the yellow and the orange together, if we take that six hundred and eighty dollars per pole, come out to about thirty-two thousand dollars to provide all of those options for all of those poles. Option B would be, we would go every other, so, you know, as you're coming down the highway, you, you can see more than one, you know, inside, so if you did every other, or something like that, broke it up, splitting that in half, be twenty-four total light poles, total cost of sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. So I did, this, this option was, let's see, half of the light posts, so every other along the yellow area, and then all of the orange dots downtown. And this would be. Every other along the C S H eight, or C S A H two. And here we have half of them as well, every other, so fourteen thousand total cost for the twenty-one. So, some different ideas, and again, obviously open to some discussion. We did apply and were approved for the banner arms. I held off on the holiday lighted decorations, and we can always come back to that, but they did approve us to apply based on the vendor, the company. They did approve the banner arm installation, XL Energy Center did, so if we want to, we could move forward with that. And again, if we wanna do any kind of holiday decorations, we just have to reapply. But the banner arm piece and the installation to the poles is the most important aspect of that, in terms of the liability.
We just wanted to make sure that we were gonna get to AOK before we went too far.
Sure.
On this project, so.
So, long and short, you know, we, as you know, we don't have any pot of money that's set aside for it, we're not actively budgeting for it, so if you're looking to fund this, you're either just going straight into existing reserves and pulling money out, or you're going to save money up in the capital wallet, to do it at some, implement it over time, or at some point in the future. Now, like a lot of things, until you're doing it, you don't take a look at, like when you buy a new car, all of a sudden you see your car, model car all over the place, the same thing, we start talking lighting direction, or lighting, you look a lot more closely, so over the holiday season, staff is looking at what other cities are doing. Every other pole is a long ways between poles, and most cities that are doing implementation, they choose the geographic area, and they generally do normal spacing on every pole where they're doing it. So I would, that, so that's just my recommendation, I recommend, if you're implementing it, do it every pole in the geography that you're doing it, to keep things consistent. I would do, I wouldn't do like, hey, we're gonna do half this year, half that next year, I'd do a full implementation to the degree that you're going to do it. But the banners can be separate from the holiday decorations as well. I mean, we can implement those at any particular point in time, correct, Kevin?
Yep.
So, you could do banners at some point, and then in the future, budget or save up for doing the other piece of it. The reality is, there, we, we wanted to create the opportunity for it, it's in our long-term plans to do something like this, but there never really was a timeline or budget discussion on it, so coming into the next budget season, should we be doing something in the budget now, or in the future, to accommodate being able to do something like this?
All right. Let me get this thing. No, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna wrap up and say, if you wanna give us information, you guys can review it and discuss, and that's a great.
Thank you. Council?
You know, if we got rid of the survey, we can use that money to, to help with, you know, part of the cost here.
Could be taking two hundred and twenty thousand that we didn't put the road in, and try to do this, and.
There you go.
I love it, I don't love spending money, and so I'm conflicted, and I could probably, I don't know, I could go either way, I'd love to hear what you guys all think.
I like the idea of doing it, but I think we should hold off until we can put it as part of our budget in my opinion.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Josh, you know? What, what Bryce is suggesting?
Yes.
Okay.
And when we say that, we're talking about getting into this budget season, and.
Well, so the, the impact on any budget here depends on, so let's say you're gonna budget for it in the capital wallet, save up for it, you know, initially build it, and then you put so much a year to turn out decorations and things over time. How many years, cause it's taking, it's taking thirty-two thousand and divided by X number of years, that's your, that's your impact, and we all know that about twelve thousand dollars is typically about a one percent tax impact. Or, excuse me, twenty thousand dollars is a one percent tax impact. The other option is just going into some reserve somewhere and just saying, we're gonna take.
Healthy are our reserves, I mean, is that really a feasible solution?
It is, depending on what you might want to, it's, it's just a question of priority. So Kelly and I are estimating that we're gonna have a sizable suite this year, due in large part because of the benefit of having the CARES Act dollars coming in. The question is, what do you do with those dollars? You could take a portion of them and just do this project, but then they would be available hypothetically to go into the capital projects fund to help service the debt for purchase of the property next door, debt service on the roundabout, et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, we've been talking about the beautification of downtown for a long time, and I know things fizzled, or, or maybe they haven't fizzled, I just haven't heard much about, you know, that group getting together, but I mean, I think. I would love to see that stretch continue to get, you know, more of this kind of attention and this kind of stuff, I think. I don't know, I hate the look of it right now, with, you know, the fourteen different types of poles that we have going up and down the road, and, I mean, I think if we could do the beautification of it, I think it would go a long way, so, and I like to spend money apparently, so, I mean.
Like I said, I could be, I could be talked in either side, and I, I kinda, I, hard to be tense or agree with you, Josh, I mean, I think the more we do to improve the downtown Alcoa New Market area, the better it's, it has some, it has been something we've talked about doing for a long time, and when we, when the roundabout was built, and we put those lights in, it really makes for a cool drive, especially in the snow. And I think, I think it's important that we have, things as a city, that as a community, we can just take pride in it and have value in it, I.
Before I say what you're gonna say?
If this is.
Nice try.
If this is something that we can reasonably pay for out of reserves, without having to create a tax impact, then I'm, I guess, for me, it's really strictly a budgetary thing, I, I, I'd rather not, I'd rather be, if, if we could pay for it out of reserves, I'd be fine with it, as long as it doesn't impact something else. Cause you do bring up a point I didn't think of before, Tom, is that, we did get, we are, as a city, getting, getting funds. I mean, we got CARES funds last year.
We'll be getting our, our funds very shortly, although the guidance on how you can actually use those dollars, it's, it's like the CARES Act is very vague at this point, but.
It is, but, I mean, we know you can kinda, I don't know, I mean, you can shift one thing from a budget line somewhere else, then apply that, I mean, that, that's a workable scenario.
Yeah, I mean, if you were to, let's say, budget implement, fully implement five years, you're talking six, sixty-five hundred dollars a year, talking about a quarter, I'm really wrong here, but like a quarter percent tax impact.
For the next five years, you know, just for that, and so, you know, I'd suggest, the council's aware of all of the moving parts that we have within the budget, so it's usually not one thing, it's usually the accumulation of lots of small things within the budget.
To me, this is like a savings account expense, you know, I mean, if, if you have it in the savings account, it's not worth, it's worth spending on, as long as it doesn't deplete your savings.
Are you, are you going?
Now I'm for doing it, let's do it.
Like, are we going like option A, everything, all of the things, or are we gonna?
Yeah, I'm for option A.
Well, and, and when I was trying to interrupt you, or was about to interrupt you, budget shopping down, cause I fully agree with you, if this goes into, if this goes into the budget, I mean, I see this is one of the easy ones, it's gonna get crossed off every single year.
One hundred percent.
And if it's, oh, we're at six percent, and we wanna get down to five percent, see the lights, or banners, I mean, so this is just, if we can do it, let's just do it.
Couldn't agree with you more.
So do you guys want us to bring it up as an option for potential use of, of suite dollars?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. All right.
Is there any, you had mentioned option A, is we just going to go for the whole package, or do we want to?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think so, unless anyone objects to that.
I support you of wanting to spend money.
Research, if there are light span on these items, because once, like everything else, once we buy it, we gotta replace it, so we'll have to start budgeting for that.
Yeah, the, the hub and the banner arms, I wanna say it was twenty, twenty-five years or so. The banners, depending on what color you go it, like if we did a, a white, it's obviously gonna get brown and dirty, whereas if we came up with a colored theme, that would take sun and some of that stuff. He, he did say, the contact at Precision did say that they're, you know, they're made for this, they're made to take wind and sun and some of that certain material, so I don't have an exact lifespan on those. The lights, you know.
Those are probably gonna be a little more, you know, we might lose one or two each year or something, just due to.
I would just see the gist of what we're doing, and we're doing it to transfer a little bit of seed money into the capital wallet, to start putting money away for replacement and, or more replacements.
And there's also the thought too about seasonal, you know, we talked about, you know, Fourth of July themed, or holiday, winter themed, the ones you saw at Burnsville, city of Burnsville, were their winter-specific ones that they put up for the holidays, but.
Okay. So, is that that direction?
Yes, we're gonna bring up.
That would be a bit crystal clear.
Bring options for funding utilizing reserves.
Well, let's see.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're still up, Kevin.
Am I?
Cause, well, we've gone through reports except for parks, so.
Oh, okay.
We saved for you.
All right, perfect.
In a certain order, this is.
No, I'll just close it out.
Okay.
So everything's done here, so just grab your next one, was it from?
The.
Wagner Park.
Yeah. All right. So. In the spring of two thousand twenty, due to COVID-nineteen, we had to stop taking reservations and close down the Wagner Park Shelter. It's still closed for the season, and we currently aren't taking reservations. We readdressed this in our November Parks Commission meeting, and typically each year, we start taking reservations in December, and it's pretty, there's usually a line out the door for people to come in, and we put a pause on that, and it's something that we've been reviewing each month at the Parks Commission meetings. We've gotten some feedback from the community, people asking us when we're gonna reconsider, or if we're gonna start opening that again, so we've responded to that at the Parks Commission meeting, and, and opened that up for discussion, and so in doing that, we've looked at. So in doing that, we've looked at, we got some direction from the Parks Commission that, so that we can start going through that process. And so in digging into that, we have looked at offering Saturdays and Sunday rentals, updating our rental form with Andrea, coming up with a COVID preparedness plan, which we, we have to do no matter what type of facility we're gonna work with, updating our fee structure to include a cleaning fee, so that the city doesn't get dinged for that, and as things loosen, restrictions change, making updates to that preparedness plan and so on. So, one of the things that I tackled was putting together that preparedness plan, and what that's gonna look like. They did just as of March fifteenth update where the shelter would fall, so now would fall within the indoor entertainment venues specifically, so. We have an attachment included in the memo that lays that out, it's a nice, enjoyable reading, if you guys wanna look over the COVID preparedness plan, but it's in line with, you know, I, right before this update on March fifteenth, I had looked at four or five different areas, and kind of come up with the best option here for our preparedness plan. I've worked with Andrea to update our park shell, shelter renter, rental form, and we used to have an agreement piece included in there, and now we've kind of adjusted that so that it's a rules and regulations piece that they'll just sign off. uh, rules and regulations piece that they'll just sign off recognizing that they've seen it. Um, and we've created a, um, a, uh, more broadly usable city facility waiver release and, uh, indemnification agreement, uh, that we can use for any city facility moving forward. But that includes, um, all of the, uh, liability pieces that somebody would have to sign off on if they're gonna use a facility. So they have to sign that and then agree that they've looked over and received the rules and regulations. Uh, both of those are included as attachments. Um, so the cleaning service, uh, we would have to outsource that and there are plenty of services available. Uh, but they would come and, uh, professionally clean the facility. And if we're gonna do a Saturday and Sunday rental, we looked at a Sunday morning cleaning before the Sunday renters came in. And then a midweek cleaning service whenever they were available, uh, after the Sunday rental. And, um, the cost breakdown, seventy-five dollars for a weekday service. Um, after the Sunday rental, the weekend service would be a little more expensive at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per cleaning. And then they suggested doing a monthly floor cleaning at two hundred dollars, um, not having to do that each week or after each use, but, um, just coming through once a month. So, uh, based on the demand that we've gotten, um, from the Parks Commission, uh, we figured we'd we'd be okay or wouldn't have an issue renting that twice a week on Saturdays and Sundays, which would be eight months or eight rentals per month. So that total cost would come on to a thousand dollars per month. And we broke that out over each rental, which would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then we added a little cushion there. Uh, to bring us up to a hundred and fifty dollars per use to account for, uh, the city maybe having to buy hand sanitizers. Um, you know, unexpected costs that might come up, um, if something happens and we have to pay a little extra for an additional cleaning service or something like that. Um, another benefit of using this service is that they do provide signage, um, in the form of window clings and the door when people come. Uh, table stands so that, uh, people are at the table, they can see that we've had it professionally cleaned. And so that's, you know, a a nice piece that we can add. So people are comfortable in the facility. Um, and I know we've, we've had some discussion about limiting that to Saturdays and Sundays. Um, we, as a Parks Commission, we discussed kind of keeping an eye on demand and if if we see that one, as restrictions start to lift and we feel more comfortable, uh, maybe offering weekday, uh, rentals, we can address that. Uh, but again, we were just thinking Saturdays and Sundays might be the best way to start.
Kevin, part of it is having fixed days as opposed to just generally open the whole week. It's part of being able to schedule the cleaning.
Yes, exactly. Yep. Yep. And obviously with with more rentals means a higher, uh, more cleaning fees that we'd have to take on. Um, so, you know, it it currently this wouldn't impact, uh, the city's current budget. We would pass that additional cleaning service on to the renters at a hundred and fifty dollars on top of their, the normal rental fee that we're currently charging. Uh, so, open that up for discussion and if you guys could provide some direction.
So something like this, the Parks Commission is all for moving forward, right? Anyone opposed?
No.
We're all on board.
One thing I'll point out because this might come up at some point is we're not planning to be able, at least we're putting the first squarely on the user to be responsible for following. The rules, so to speak. We're not gonna have a police officer swing down at every event and check the boxes or or anything like that. So it the current proposal, if the council wants us to go in that direction, we can relook at it, but that's not our intent at this point.
I assume, I mean, they'll sign away any whatever if there were to be an outbreak traced back to something that the city can't be held.
All right. I think, uh, yeah, stat feels they have direction then?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
There might be some future action items. The council may need to approve, I think, the lease agreement.
Uh, yeah, because we'll have to, uh, adjust the rental fee structure.
So there'd be a, an update on fees and then there will be, which we can actually probably roll in with the fees that we're proposing to bring back for the development fees in a single, single item. And then the council may need to approve the new template for the lease agreement.
Yep. Farmers market.
All right. So, um, we have been working on a farmer's market, Alcoa Market. I know it's a popular topic. Um, so one of the things I started doing was looking into kind of the, the, um, best approaches that I saw out there, um, in talking to some other city contacts. Um, there are a couple of cities. Bloomington does a really nice job. Richfield is is heralded as one of the better, um, farmers markets that's out there. That's a city-run farmer's market option. Um, their city staff completely manages, runs and oversees that. They have somebody who's staffed um, to run that and oversee that. Um, and then the other option is to partner up with, um, another organization, um, being the St. Paul Farmer's Market.
Um, in talking to, uh, some people that are in this area, the the, uh, feedback that we got was that we're looking at, especially starting this off or getting it off the ground, we'd be looking at a minimum of at least twenty hours per week of staff resources that would be needed to coordinate and that's on a low end. Um, again, especially given that it's our first year, um, and even just the amount of time I've spent, um, with some of the things that I've done. It's a pretty big task to take on. Um, another challenge that that we've run into is just the access to vendors. Um, you know, and and finding vendors that are willing to come out and, um, so that that poses a challenge as well. And then the administrative duties that come or the administrative tasks that come with, uh, offering and running, um, a city-run um, farmer's market is, uh, pretty daunting. I'll sh- I can show you an example here in a second of some of the different things that if we want to hold ourselves to high standard, what that might look like. Um, so the other approach is a partnership, which, um, in a sense, we're acting as a liaison uh, between the St. Paul Farmer's Market and the, uh, location that we'd be using, um, which allows us to tap into, uh, their network of vendors. Um, the coordinator that we would work with, they handle all the administrative duties, so contracts with the vendors, um, a lot of those different pieces. And, um, again, it allows us to act as a liaison between those two parties and, um, make sure that uh, there's good communication and that it's it's running smoothly, but it it removes some of that administrative burden. Um, so I did want to show you guys just quickly here.
So in, uh, investigating and looking at, and I I went out to their, uh, Saturday Farmer's Market and, um, looked at some of the different things that they're offering, but, uh, just to kind of show you guys, uh, some of documentation and some of the administrative. Oops. Oh, they had it. They must have literally just updated their website. Um, they had a.
Before we go too much further.
Sure.
Is anybody super interested in going the city-run route?
Oh.
I think we can just move forward.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I I, yeah, that sounds good.
How the conversation's been for St. Paul?
Good, very good. Um, they're very excited. Um, I don't know why this isn't working here. But, uh, yeah, so, uh, one of the things that we looked at was potential locations and different criteria that's gonna be important for a good location. Um, some of the things that, uh, came up in talking to different cities and and, uh, uh, coordinator at the, um, St. Paul Farmer's Market Group was that, um, having parking available is important. Um, in terms of inclement weather that might come up, making sure that we have spaces that can handle rain. Um, that aren't gonna get wet, soggy, muddy, some of those things. Um, making sure we have large enough spaces for vendors because a lot of them come with their trucks plus a ten by ten tent setup. So you need quite a bit of space per vendor. We looked at, you know, doing something over on the the street next to Wagner Park and some of that and just the spacing's too tight. Um, you know, it's a, it's a great location, but, um, it it just is missing some of the important criteria there. Uh, access to electric hookups, um, so you can see here, there's a variety of things we looked at. So, uh, looking at all those, Alcoa Speedway, um, was a pretty good location for us and, um, I went and met with them and they were immediately very excited to jump on board and help out. And, uh, they even offered to help come and help us set up and, uh, oversee. And so, um, yeah, I've I've been pleasantly surprised to see how excited they are and they're, they said they're gonna be customers and so on and so forth. So. Um, so, yeah, and and so what I've been doing, I've been asking, acting as a liaison between the two groups, trying to connect them and make sure that, uh, that flows smoothly. Um, working with some local vendors that have expressed interest in being involved. Um, and, uh, trying to connect them with the St. Paul Farmer's Market. Um, once the, uh, once Farmer's Market's up and running, I want to be there, be a visible city staff presence. Um, there's potential that we have an EBT station, um, where we'd have to work with the county for that, but we'd, we'd have somebody there to staff that and make sure that that's a, an available option.
So Kevin, everybody like that know what EBT, what EBT is?
Yeah, so it's, um, uh, people who need to access, uh, low-income families that might need to access that, uh, option. Um, and they, they actually swipe through the county, they can swipe and get credits. So if they spend five dollars, they can actually get ten dollars worth of credits, uh, using their EBT cards. Um, so, uh, it's an attractive option for low-income families to have access to locally sourced food, which is, um, uh, a pretty, uh, great option for families that might need that.
Is there a tentative timeline at all or?
Yes, so, uh, the fir- they're looking at tentatively the first farmer's market being offered on June fourteenth. Um, and running through October, mid-October.
So awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't tell you how they're gonna do this. Well, you probably don't need to. This is, uh, that's really exciting. I mean, are they pretty well committed to doing this though?
Yeah, he's, and and I think, uh, in his initial stages of planning, he's actually gotten a little more excited. Um, uh, he actually put out a Facebook post and I think some of us have seen that. Um, and he said that he got over twenty percent participation on that, which is unheard of for what he's seen, uh, when he's reached out and done some of this initial, uh, outreach to communities. Um, and not only that, but he said he saw over two hundred written responses to his post and every single one of them was positive. He's like, when I, you know, when I do this in other areas, there's trolls, you know, people that come in with negative comments just to stir something up. And he said, I didn't get one of those. So, uh, yeah, so that, he's, he's pretty excited about it, um, and and sees a lot of great potential. Um, he's got, uh, some vendors already signed on that are interested. So he's got a couple of produce, which is kind of your, your, your base. Um, and then you kind of work outwards from there. So he's got a couple of produce vendors who are signed on, a honey producer, an apple grower. Um, I actually just, uh, connected with a local farmer, uh, here in New Frontier Farms that's a meat producer and they're, uh, gonna sign up and get involved. So, uh, the goal is to have eight to twelve, uh, vendors for the first one. And, um, that's, that's, he thinks is kind of an ideal number for a first, first year of farmer's market. Um, yeah, so.
So, so should we temper our excitement? I mean, is there still a chance this is not gonna happen or? I know. Do we, when do we tell people?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm waiting on Vince and Neil's myself.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, uh, the coordinator that I'm working with is, you know, tempering my, you know, also, he's, he's not giving me the green light entirely. Um, I think that's just kind of how his approach is. Uh, but again, every conversation I have with him, he's more and more excited. Um, and so, yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Any pitfalls, any potential issues that have been, have came up?
Well, I I think what, from what he explains to me, the sweet spot is making sure you have vendors that are interested. And then having, uh, when those vendors show up, that we have customers show up because. Yeah, that's, that's, you know, I've tried to explain to him, I think there's a, a strong demand in the community here that that won't be an issue, but.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's, you know, if you get, uh, good showing vendors, the first couple, but people aren't there, those vendors will stop showing up. And vice versa, if you have four hundred people that show up and there's a limited number of vendors or, you know, vendors that they're interested in, they stop coming. So it's, that's kind of the sweet spot there where we have to, um, so.
But no indications that that's becoming problematic at some point.
No, no, not, not at the time, no.
All right, we'll be patient.
Kind of.
Kind, we're not really gonna be patient.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, again, we're, we're moving in the right direction and, like, every conversation I have, it's, it's looking more and more positive, so.
I appreciate all your work on this.
Yeah.
Uh, does anyone have any questions or? I kind of cut you off. Did you have more to present or?
That's it.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, guys.
Okay, on to discussion by council. Does anyone have anything for that? If not, we take a motion to adjourn. Fire away.
So right now, most events would be allowed in some form or fashion. Uh, we've had the staff some discussions with the organizers, you know, for like the fireman's dance. And we've just said, right now it's looking positive. The dial, to use the governor's terminology, is being turned in the direction that it would be permitted. But we've advised on that right now. There are some restrictions that are in place. I mean, it's a fire, it's a dance, but you don't. You know? Yeah, it's, it's, you know, so we just said, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to accommodate that. You're gonna have to have people confined to the, to group tables. That you can't have general milling. You're gonna have to have everybody wear masks. You're gonna have to have only people socially distanced waiting to get in. You can have a band, but you might have to have like pod squares in front of the dance where only people from the same group can be there. And so.
What?
So we've just raised, so we've had questions. So in past, having worked with the relief on this for years, there's some point where if you're gonna have a band, you have just for scheduling purposes, you have to make the commitment. We do know that every festival around us is planning to go this year and do something. And so I, our last understanding is I think they're looking at it. I think they're trying to figure out how they work within the current COVID restrictions and trying to measure whether or not they might be loosening up as we move forward. Those discussions were held a couple of weeks ago, um, right after the governor turned things just a little bit. So we're, I, we haven't had a recent discussion with them, but right now I think the plan is to have a fire rescue day. The question is, what is it going to look like is still the question.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
It's a motion by Amanda.
Did you have something else?
I'll second that motion. Go on, favor.
Aye.
All right, you adjourn. It was great to see everybody in person.